Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting for the Salina City Commission, March 12th, 2025. And we'll call this to order. And I'll request if we have confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act notice that's been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. Go with the roll call.
Mayor Linkiewicz.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Here.
Commissioner Ivy.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Okay. Everyone that's able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Onto administration.
Item 3.1 will be to conduct online interviews with prospective executive search firms to assist with recruitment of candidates for the position of city manager.
Ms. Fisher.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. For the sake of our schedule, I will turn this over to you. It does appear that our first firm representative, Chris Lowe, is joining us via Zoom.
Mr. Lowe, welcome, and thank you for attending this afternoon.
Oh, thank you very much. Happy to be here.
So if I want to get started with questions, or do you have kind of a, like a presentation or overview you'd like to start with?
Yeah, sure. I can kind of give you some background on our firm. You know, I'm a native Kansan, so don't hold the fact that I live in Colorado now against me. Grew up in Lawrence. My dad used to referee Salina Central, Salina South football games every year when I was a kid. So I've known Salina a long time. We used to meet when I was a city manager in Baldwin. We would meet, KMEA would meet Salina often. So very familiar with your town. And John Devine's a good friend. I used to use him to do some of our work when I was city manager in Baldwin. So GPS is a firm that Brett and I started six years ago. Brett is a longtime Kansan as well, grew up in Wichita. We started this firm because we wanted to provide a better service than what traditional firms maybe give to cities and towns when they perform searches like these. And so, you know, we are, Brett was the manager in Holton for seven or eight years, I was in Holton for five years. We were on the KMEA board together. And we always said, when we were done with our city...
We lost you there. See if we can get him back. That's unfortunate.
And it could be a pigeon sitting on telephone pole in between here. Neither one of us has any control of.
Fair point.
Where did he say Brett was the city manager? Which city?
Baldwin.
That's where he was. His co-founder was...
Holton.
Holton, thank you. Yeah.
Does he know we're not getting him?
Yes.
Okay.
When we get back, is there any way to get a little more volume?
I concur.
We're on Zoom for the city, right? Citizens are watching?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's streaming on YouTube.
Okay. I was just surprised that even one of our regulars would come in person to...
Meeting is young.
You never know what can happen. I mean, a trash truck could have knocked into the cell tower close to his place. I mean, it's just something that you can't fix from either end.
What was his dad's name? Did you catch that?
I did not take note of that.
I'm wondering if you've yelled at him before.
Get your act in, fuck.
Because in his day, refereeing that rivalry, just guessing his age, he had some lively contest there.
That was the state championship for all Brett Cooper's.
Right, yeah.
Can you hear us okay, Mr. Lowe?
Aaron, you're muted.
We don't have audio from you yet.
He's muted.
She will.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So...
Well, do you think it's us or him? Huh? And we got you again. Check on audio.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can copy you. Yes, sir.
All right.
All right.
Apologize for that. So I'll kind of start over. Brett and I were both former city managers in Kansas, Holton and Baldwin City. We did that for several years. He finished his career up in Texas. I finished mine up in Colorado. And we, for years, had always dreamed of starting a firm and serving cities in a way that we didn't see them being served when we were managers. So we are not what we consider to be an executive search firm. We are city managers who hire city managers and department heads. That's part of our philosophy. One of the things that we think makes us different than, say, maybe national search firms who kind of just run their own playbook every time for every city is we really take the time to get to know our communities. We both are very familiar with Salina, as I mentioned. You know, we've done nationwide searches that have been extremely successful. I don't know if I was cut off before, but we just actually placed Jason Gage in Brentwood, Tennessee. But we've done searches across the country in Wisconsin, Nebraska, Texas, Colorado, Utah. And we've found that we're more successful because we do take the time to learn the community. And that way, just like when we were managers and we were selecting, say, a department head, we knew the culture of the city, we knew what we wanted to find for that city, and then we used our personal networks to find that person that would have the best chance to succeed in that position. We just, I'll give you a good example. We just finished the Junction City city manager search. That was a nationwide search. I think we found what I would consider to be a non-traditional candidate. He was a person with prior military experience and was a borough township manager in Pennsylvania, but had a connection to Junction City from many years ago when he was stationed there. Those are the types of network connections that we have as managers that we think we leverage in a different way than maybe just a search firm that has a database of city managers that they... In fact, I still get, I haven't looked for a city manager job in eight years, but I still get Baker Tilly and SGR that send out these bulk emails. And we don't profess to do business like that. In fact, we used our LinkedIn networks. We found that ICMA is a less and less valuable resource. We still use it, but ICMA used to just be where everybody went to find their job as a city manager. We find that the LinkedIn networks that we've established, and they're in the, they number in the thousands. Those have been particularly important in finding what we think are good candidates. And, you know, that Junction City example is a good one. It was a very non-traditional candidate. I don't think he even had an MPA, but he had experience as a manager and then experience in the military. And when we met with all of the commission in Junction City, it was very important for them to have a liaison that could work with the post. And so we did that. And I think that's an example of how we customize everything that we do and that we leverage those networks. You know, the other thing that I think that we do that is different in terms of our search process is we care about the candidate experience. We don't just want to make sure that you all like the candidate. We want to make sure that that candidate has a positive experience because we think it reflects well on your city and our firm. And so we spend a lot of time making sure that the candidate is always well-informed, that we're very transparent with them, that we're very honest with them, that we share
If you can hear us, Mr. Lowe, we've lost you again with the videos froze up.
Yes, we've done Grand Island, Nebraska. We've done Janesville.
He might want to cut his video and just keep the audio narrow bandwidth.
That's all. Only one time in our six years have we had to redo a search, and that was in La Grange, Texas. The person just didn't last. And that was not a candidate that we had recommended, but the commission shows, and so we negotiated that deal. I'm actually a licensed Kansas attorney, so the other thing that I think that we add to the mix is we can help with the negotiations when you find your successful candidate. And we think that's a good service that we provide because it provides a buffer so that you don't start with maybe hurt feelings, just kind of like NBA teams use agents to communicate with their players. We kind of think that that's the role we play in the process. And the final thing that I would add that I would tell you is a different part of our process. You know, everybody advertises in the same places. We're going to get the same set of eyeballs as any company that interviews with you today or tomorrow. What we feel is different is the personal customization, both in the candidate experience and also the customization of your finalist process. So we don't just have one cookie cutter thing and we say, well, okay, when we're going to bring our three or four finalists in, here's exactly what we do. We don't do that. We ask, what does your community want? Do you want to meet and greet? Do you want some sort of Q and A with the public? Do you want department heads involved? Do you want some sort of realistic exercise performed so that you get an idea of how they perform, say, in a council meeting? We completely customize that based on what you, as a group, decide that you think would be the best. So in terms of why are we different from a regular search firm, I think you're kind of getting a flavor for why I think we do things a little differently. Now, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Any members of the commission have any specific, like any questions they have written up?
Mr. Lowe, this is Commissioner Davis, Trent Davis. And you may have partially touched on this, but how do you decide if a city like Salina, which is moderate-sized population, economically growing, needs someone with larger city experience to guide us up, or someone who might be perceived as more comfortable with small-town America and maybe on his or her way up? Do we need to look up or parallel or down for our next manager?
Well, you know, to be honest, I wouldn't limit yourself either way. I'd look up and down. You might have an up-and-comer that's really tearing it up and you think is the right fit for your community. And for, really, it comes down to personality and management style. And so I wouldn't limit it based on size. Now, obviously, we're going to, you know, Salina is a fairly sophisticated city. I know Peter Johnston and I ran cross-country in high school together, and I know he's a lawyer in town, and I've kept in touch with him over the years. And I would have lunch with John Devine several times in Salina in that downtown, and I'm like, you know, this isn't the sleepy Salina that I remember when I was a kid. And I said, this is a fairly sophisticated city. So obviously, do we want somebody that has experience maybe and can bring things from a larger community that would be best practices that we want to see implemented in Salina? Absolutely, we'll want to look at those people. But that doesn't mean that we should be saying no to the up-and-comer that, I mean, you might find the next Jason Gage, who's, you know, wants to stay there for 10 years, who might be a mid-level person who's only been in, you know, towns of, you know, 10 or 20,000. So I honestly, that's why we work our network so hard to make sure that we're appealing to as broad a group of folks that we can. And that's where we provide value as a firm, I think, is we then cast that net wide, and then we spend a lot of time with those candidates, informally and formally, to make sure that we know that this person is somebody that's capable of doing the job, whether it's somebody coming from a larger community or maybe somebody coming from a smaller community that's moving up.
Thank you.
We're going to discuss format. We're just going to go down the line?
Yes.
More questions?
I'm done.
Okay. Is that how you want to do it?
Free form is fine with me. I think the more organic the conversation, I think the more we're going to get from it. So I'm not going to worry about structure at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Bill Longbine, do you try to engage candidates who aren't looking for a change, or do you just seek out those who are looking for new positions?
Well, as you all probably know, I don't know a city manager that's not always looking. And it's one of the hazards of the profession, I guess. But we absolutely engage folks. That's why I stress the importance of our manager networks. I'd give it a different example. So when, say, an executive search firm sends out an ad or puts something on the web, that's for people that are looking. And those people, those are like mailers that you get in your mailbox every day, you know? If you're not looking, you don't care, you just throw it away. But when you get an email from a friend saying, hey, this is a great opportunity, I think you need to take a look at it, that person's going to take a harder look. And so we absolutely are in connection with all of the managers that we've worked with in our decades in the business, both in Kansas, Missouri, now Colorado and Texas, and now across the nation. We absolutely are thinking of people all the time for specific positions. In fact, I've got two in mind right now that I think would be great candidates, and those are just from my experience being a manager in Kansas for as long as I was and growing up in Kansas and knowing Salina as well as I do and understanding the environment and what it takes to be successful there. And so we absolutely engage folks that aren't actively looking. We will actually, instead of just a blast thing on LinkedIn, we'll select those folks that we know would be a good fit, and we'll actually contact them and, hey, not trying to pressure you, but hey, we think you have an opportunity here that you probably ought to look at. And we've actually hired folks that way who weren't necessarily looking.
And Commissioner Longbine, could I follow up on that? This is Commissioner Hoppeck. You talked about how you seek individuals that are not actually looking. Do you represent individuals that are actually looking separately?
No. We don't represent, we only represent cities. But like I said, we also kind of consider ourselves to be a representative of the candidates as well because it doesn't do us any good to put somebody in the spot for you that we don't think is going to be successful, and then you're having to do this process again in, you know, two years or something like that. So we work very hard to try and be very respectful of the candidate situation so that they fit in just as well, you know, with your community, if they're successful, than just representing the city and saying... But we do not represent individuals at all. We only represent our clients, and we're very clear with that with our candidates. But at the same time, I like to take care of those candidates because I've been in those positions too. And I've had recruiters that treated me very poorly and didn't, you know, disclose maybe everything that they should have. And that oftentimes can get you off on the wrong foot. And so we work very hard that we are never going to have that in our process. And I think in six years, only having one candidate not make it, you know, the ICMA minimum of two years. In fact, that's the only one we've had that's not still in place, and we've been doing this six years.
Okay. Sorry, Commissioner Longbine, that kind of tied in, so go ahead.
Okay. Is the firm just you and Brett?
It is. We did that on purpose. As many of you probably understand, we found that we didn't want employees that maybe didn't meet our standard, and so we wanted to keep our overhead low and so we could pass those savings on to communities. And we also said, hey, we want to do this from beginning to end. We want to be the only people that are controlled so that we make sure that you get the absolute highest level of professional service, and that is people that have been doing this for 20 years are going to handle every last step of this search, other than, you know, we farm out the graphic design because obviously I'm too old to be all that technologically facile. So we do have a graphic designer that we have on staff, and she does an incredible job. I think you'll see in our materials, she puts together a very compelling brochure. But we handle all of that information gathering. She puts that together, and then we handle every bit of candidate interaction, and we handle every bit of, like, I just got back from Sterling, Colorado. I spent two days in Sterling, and I met with every member of the commission, except for the one that had strep throat. And we spent a couple hours with each of them because we want to know exactly what they are looking for and what the person that's going to be the most successful for that particular commission, understanding that there will be changes in that. But we figure that if we start off with a good match, that gives the best chance for the community and the candidate to start a really good relationship.
One more question. What trends do you see in the municipal hiring arena today? And when was the last time you were in Salina?
Gosh, when was the last time I was in Salina? I think I was there last year. My dad and I rode motorcycles. He's from Lawrence, and so we met up in Salina and did some riding down into Lindesburg and down around there and had lunch. And then I headed back my way, and he headed back his way. So that was probably a year and a half ago. So, but I drive through there all the time, you know, when I go to KU games. And of course, I haven't come to basketball this year, but for good reason, I think. But so, let's see, what was the other part you asked me about?
The trends in hiring.
Oh, the trends in hiring. Well, you know, I kind of mentioned one, but it might have gotten cut off with the technological difficulty there. But, you know, it used to be that aspiring city managers or assistants or other managers who were looking to make a move, they just went to the ICMA website, and all of those were listed there. And that used to be kind of the central clearinghouse. I still think it is a little bit, but I will tell you this. I think the biggest trend has been in the ability to use these other platforms like a LinkedIn. We've even had, we've even used Indeed. Now, you have to sift through a lot of chaff to get to the wheat there, but I've had good candidates. I remember a search in Wisconsin we did where we weren't getting very good results because they were a little low on salary, and we just weren't getting the numbers that we wanted. So we advertised it on Indeed and found some. But I would say the biggest change is the LinkedIn platforms or the way you connect with kind of the younger generation of managers, the ones that are more up and coming. And older managers are on there still too. But, and then, you know, the other trend is, you know, city managers are looking to get more, a more solid base in their original contracts. So they may ask for more things than maybe they used to, and I think that's a trend that city commissions are kind of slowly starting to understand, that the market is kind of turning toward the candidates more than it is to the communities. And so I think communities are having to understand the market a little bit better because I do think that salaries are becoming more competitive, and that's important, that you spend a lot of time analyzing what you think you're... In fact, I just did a search for Sterling, Colorado, because we were trying to figure out what their new salary range needed to be to be competitive. And, you know, I basically surveyed the market throughout the Colorado Municipal League, just like the League of Kansas Municipalities has their salary surveys, and we had to adjust that number. And then, you know, I will say that the younger the manager, the more things that they're interested in in terms of fringe benefits. They want more time off, they want more flex time, they want to work remotely, those types of things are things that we see now being more requested by candidates. Not that you always have to go along with them. I think you find a reasonable balancing act between the values of your commission and what you expect, and then you try and, when you find the right candidate, you try and find the places of agreement and come to a satisfactory arrangement. But in terms of the hiring trends, those are definitely things in terms of the recruiting, and then the negotiations are the two kind of main things that I've seen change from certainly when I started back in 2011.
Chris, Commissioner Hoppeck, we only have a couple minutes left. One of the things that concerned me looking at your deal is that you brought 10 to 15 semifinalists to it, it looked like. We had troubles getting down to four search firms. So is that normal to send that many candidates to us, or is that up to us to say, we want you to try to get it down to six or five or something? How do you handle that?
Well, we would never send you 10 to 15. That 10 to 15 are for semifinalists. What we try and do is give you, what I do, once we've completed our recruiting and we've got our panel of candidates, I usually meet with the commission and exec, and we go over the resumes, and you tell me, who are the 10 to 15 candidates that you would like me to interview, not for you to interview?
Okay.
And then we do video interviews with those folks where we kind of get to learn a little bit more about their journey and about their, you know, their management style, their background. And when we have completed those, we actually record those, we send those to you, and we let you watch those so you see the same things that we're seeing. We also have a customized matrix where we use the things that you're... We also have a customized matrix where we use the things that you're looking for and that's how I rate the candidates. And so we will have those ratings for you when you pick your 10 to 12 or whatever it is that you want us to talk to. Then we interview those folks for about 30, 45 minutes each. And then, once you've had an opportunity to view those, then we would get together again and say, okay, out of this group, do you have a two, three, four, or whatever you want to bring in?
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. We greatly appreciate your time and it looks like our time is up, but appreciate the thoroughness in which you've answered the questions and again, the time you've taken this afternoon to join us.
Well, I apologize for the Wi-Fi disconnect, but I'm glad I was able to get back with you all and wish you the best of luck and we hope to hear from you.
Well, when you started your discussion, you said being a Coloradan would be a striking issue. It might be the KU degree that might be the worst, but we'll discuss that.
Yeah, I'm aware that was an issue. If it makes you feel any better, I went to law school in Marquette in Milwaukee because I didn't want to go to KU law school.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you all and hope you have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
You've got to go first next time.
What's that?
We'll let you go first next time.
Yeah, I'm fine with how it is.
All right. Can you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
And Mr. Davis and Ms. Curtis, I presume?
That is correct.
Okay. And you represent?
Baker, I'm sorry. Baker Tilly.
Thank you. And sorry, this is more about, this is a public meeting, so I'm just trying to get the information out there for anybody who's joining us, YouTube, et cetera. So, sorry about the formality. But if you guys have like a presentation or just an overview you guys want to give us before we ask any questions, please do so.
Well, I'll kick it off. Like to have us introduce ourselves first and then I can kind of fill you in a little bit on Baker Tilly. My name's Art Davis. I am a former city manager. I've been doing professional local government executive recruitment for about 18 years now. The, our name has, we have worked with Salina in the past. We were, at the time, called Springstead and we've since merged with Baker Tilly. And I think that's been since 2018. And Baker Tilly is an accountant, accounting, auditing and financial services firm, but we are a kind of a boutique division of the larger firm. And we strictly work on almost entirely local government leadership positions around the country. And so I do have quite a bit of experience in Missouri and Kansas. And with that, I'll let Jennifer go ahead and introduce herself and a little bit about her background.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Jennifer Curtis. I'm a director in the Public Sector Advisory Group with Baker Tilly. Spent about 28 years in the public sector, working in the majority of that time in local government as a human resources director. So very familiar working with city council and boards on city manager executive recruitments. And happy to be here today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for joining us today.
Just a little bit about Baker Tilly and our proposal. We don't want to, we want to leave most of the time for you to ask questions and to kind of interact about any questions or thoughts that you have about the proposal. We, as I stated, really focus and have a level of expertise in local government leadership positions and in city manager recruitments. I am familiar with the city of Salina and, you know, are very, have been very impressed with the progress you've made with your downtown redevelopment and as well as your economic development initiatives and the remediation at the airport and the redevelopment efforts. So I think we're prepared to answer any questions you may have about our process and what we've proposed as a part of our search.
Fantastic. Thank you. We'll get started and I will, this time I'll start to my right.
Start to the right.
Commissioner Ivey, if you have anything?
I guess just kind of quickly walk us through what your processes are and how many candidates you'd like to bring us and whether you want the public involved or, you know, we want to and just kind of a quick summarize for me.
Sure. Essentially, it's your process and we'll bring you some best practices and some of our experience of what's been successful. But we will work with you to develop a profile and a marketing recruitment brochure for the position. We'll help, I work with you to identify key attributes, characteristics, experience that you're looking for and help put together a description of the community, of the organization, and the profile and characteristics that you're looking for. We'll help you put all of that in a marketing piece and help put together and identify best locations, where to advertise and post these, this opportunity. But we're going to put your best foot forward in kind of showing as many candidates as possible around the country, the, this opportunity that exists. And we take a lot of pride in, and it's really in our DNA, to bring you a diverse candidate pool. And I mean that in every sense of the word, whether it's gender or ethnicity or in every even background and experience. And we're going to bring you a semifinalist group of candidates, anywhere from eight to 12 semifinalists that are the most qualified that we can find. And then we will do some preliminary review of their background, some nexus and a scan of the internet background on these candidates to give you a flavor for their skill set. We will also have some additional information, questionnaires and due diligence questionnaire about some of their detailed experience and inclinations, management profiles and what they do have specific experience in and how that relates to what you're looking for. And then we will have them do a video interview with you where they respond to questions that they have not seen before and they've got a certain amount of time to respond so that you'll be able to review the semifinalists and be able to discuss with Jennifer and I both at a semifinalist review meeting, the candidates and their strengths and any concerns or questions that you have about them. We will then work through those. It's your decision to make in narrowing down those candidates to three, four, or five finalists. And then we'll work to set up interviews to conduct background checks, reference checks, as well as help prepare questions, interview questions. And if you do want community participation, we will work with you to either establish panels or community meet and greets with the finalist candidates that you narrowed down. We will help you entirely through the process and we will be interchangeable. We've, we're going to work, Jennifer and I are going to work as co-project leads so that we have someone that's very interchangeable and we will be participating every step of the way to make sure that we're responsive in a way that keeps you informed. We will provide weekly progress reports on the search and including the demographics and the experience of the candidates that are applying for the position through the outreach period. So that's really kind of a synopsis. Usually our search timeline is anywhere from 90 to 120 days, assuming that we get a quick start in developing the information and the profile and the brochure that we would be using for marketing. So Jennifer, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think the other thing, Art had mentioned that you could do a meet and greet with candidates once they're identified as finalist, but some organizations also like to do like a community survey. That information could come either directly to us or to you and that would provide the community a chance to provide input on qualities or experience that they felt may be helpful for a new city manager to have as well. So just depends on your level of engagement and participation and what works for you and your community.
Yeah, Jennifer, Commissioner Hoppe here, and that was one of the questions I had is we're formulating what we really want a city manager to look like. You talk a little bit about engaging the public through questionnaires or whatever. What part of the process is that done? At the very beginning, as we're formulating that or does that happen as we get into the semifinalists or how do you, how do you handle that?
We can do it in the beginning. It just depends really on your timeline and how quickly you want to move, but we could work with you to develop a survey. It's usually just a few kind of simple questions that they provide and then we do a summary of the response and would share that with you. And then that information, along with your information, would be used to develop the candidate brochure that Art mentioned. And that information then also serves really is what we're reviewing and screening candidates along through the process, right? Because every recruitment's different and we want to make sure that we're building kind of a picture of the candidate that really meets what your long-term and immediate goals are as well. So we could do it at the beginning, is the short answer.
I believe Commissioner Davis and I were both on the commission when we used Springsteen waters last time. Do you still kind of basically use the same process and go about doing it the same way you did last time?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And I can't remember, do you help us to analyze the compensation package or do you kind of leave that up to us or how do you get involved in that portion of it?
We can assist. Jennifer's got HR director experience for some pretty sophisticated local governments, so she may have a more detailed answer. But we would help you, we wouldn't do a full compensation review, but we could do some informal, initial informal research and identify some competitive salaries both within the state and the region and with comparable cities that have the similar characteristics that you all do. And we do have a compensation division within Baker Tilly that could also provide us some additional information on what some of the similar sized cities and comparable cities are doing throughout the region. We would also, you know, I've found in the past Natalie Fisher, your HR director, is extremely well-versed in what's going on throughout the state of Kansas. And we could probably get some pretty good updates from her on what would make you competitive and comparable. Because bottom line, it's, there's several things that I think bring in the most, the best number of highly qualified candidates. And that is, is there a stable, is there a record of stability and good governance in your community? And in Salina's case, there is a long history of good governance and stable government. Number two, is there stability with the staff and the leadership and with the city staff? And yes, there hasn't been any controversies that I'm aware of or concerns in recent history. And number three, how competitive is the salary and compensation package? And that's, you know, these days, when we're seeing less number of highly qualified candidates that want to move from, let's say, outside the region, it's the compensation package that makes it either enticing or at least gets a first look by those that are possibly interested in the position. And so compensation is a big factor, in my opinion, based on my experience. And I'm sorry, Jennifer, you probably have more you can add to all that.
Yeah, we can assist with the negotiation. Some organizations prefer to do that in-house and others can find it useful for us to kind of be the go-between between two parties. We can get a little insight from them and then insight, so we can facilitate if that's what you would like us to do.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Sure. This is for Jennifer. How do you verify a candidate's past performance and references?
Yes, that's correct. We'll do reference checking. We gather some of that information from the candidate around the time we provide them to you before they're a finalist and start gathering that information. It's provided to you in kind of a summary form so we don't attribute it to any one individual, but we do gather that information and provide it to you for your review.
So do you find candidates who are trying to get away from problems?
Well, hopefully we'll vet that out, right? That's the, that's the important part of that process. That doesn't work for you or for the community if that occurs. As Art mentioned, we do a thorough background check. So as you move forward, that would include a range of things, including criminal background, a credit check, media check. And oftentimes, you know, in these public-facing roles, there is information publicly available on them. So we do a comprehensive search, but the reference checking is just one component of that, but it's a broader reference background.
Okay. And how do you evaluate candidates in regard to our culture and values?
Art, you want me to take that one or?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's a really important piece. It's not just someone, how they look on paper, but how they're going to fit in the organization, how they're going to interact with you all as the commissioners and what are they going to do to lead the organization. And so that's the information that we're really trying to pull from you or other people that we meet with as we develop that candidate profile. So that's really important to have, obviously, a good fit, not just for the candidate who's going to move to your organization, but you want to bring someone in that's going to be able to really implement the things that you need done organizationally and is also going to be a good leader for the group. It's really important to really everyone.
And we do have a, an online screening version where we, we provide, oh, you know, some people refer to them as personality test, but essentially it's a TTI strengths assessment and we can help identify the candidate's strengths and behavioral proclivities or, or tactics and, and then also do a, a base questionnaire with you all and develop a kind of a baseline to be able to compare the candidate's results with how you collectively as a city commission view a, a, a attribute such as, you know, if you're looking for somebody that's, that's visionary and strategic and it happens that their inclination is to be more, more of a micromanager, then we'll be able to identify that and identify some, some interview questions that can address those. It doesn't mean that they haven't developed skills to work around their natural instincts and skills, but you know, at least we will identify some potential red flags that we can focus some of the questions on when it gets to the interview. So we would have that. Some, some clients do want to use that tool and it's just a tool. It gives you a little bit more information. Some clients don't, they choose not to use that and it sits up to each individual client to decide if they want to, want to utilize that, that measurement tool.
All right. Afternoon. This is Commissioner Trent Davis. Actually, my question is somewhat similar to the one Commissioner Longbine asked, but I'll try to phrase it differently. In your experience, has the candidate's experience, you know, over the years been a more important attribute to assess or the community needs? Because sometimes we misidentify what we think we, we need. Are you able to tell if, if what we say we need is not what it looks like we need and then adjust the candidate search?
I am capable of doing that, but many times when you identify what you think you're looking for in, in the beginning, you'll find based on candidate responses and the additional information you've obtained, that maybe there's other skills that are, that they will bring that would be helpful to the organization and community. So I, I think it kind of, it kind of, it makes a difference, the candidates that actually submit their interest and what you're able to derive with their backgrounds and, and so yes, many times some of the directions can change through the process. And, and just like we always encourage internal interest by candidates because many times you may not know internal candidates, their experience very well, and they may open your eyes to skills that they, you've never had access or, or seen going through this process. So sometimes you'll, you'll identify strengths in internal candidates that you didn't even know you had and other times you'll find that, well, maybe we're looking for something else as you get through the process. So I think it, it changes as you go through or reaffirms what you originally thought were the priorities.
Just one other question. Is your net wide enough to pick up the so-called diamond in the rough? Or is it, does it discourage people with not as much experience from engaging the larger process?
My, my experience has been, we have identified those that we think may not have the amount of experience that, that a longtime manager may have, but that's why we kind of include up to, let's say 15 candidates in a semifinalist group. And there may be potential red flags associated with each and every candidate, but if, you know, when you're able to, to view their candidate questionnaire responses and you're able to review their, their spontaneous responses on video to questions, sometimes you'll see an aspect that you may not have even realized reviewing their written materials. So yes, we, we do uncover folks all the time that I think have the skills that maybe you wouldn't anticipate just reading through their written materials. Jennifer, what's, what's been your experience?
Yeah, I would agree with that. You may end up with a mix or often get a mix of candidates with many years of experience who've been doing very similar roles and you may get people that it would be a step-up, but they are really super impressive. You know, one of the interesting things about this work is you may end up with, let's say, two or three finalists who actually seem quite different, but they bring a combination of skills that works for you. So it would be a mix and it really depends, we'll do a pretty aggressive outreach to candidates using our database and social media, making phone calls, reaching out to people on our networks as well. And so usually through that we'll get a mix of candidates experience-wise and also the diversity too.
Thank you. Actually, I do have a question and I'm kind of looking at it from the lens of a potential candidate and I know that when they come in for an interview, there's a little bit of scrutiny that occurs on their end of it and they're looking at the community as a whole and the governing body, et cetera. And so the question I have is, and I understand that you at this point maybe just have a broad overview of our community, but is there anything that strikes you in terms of our characteristics or descriptive factors that would prove to be problematic or difficult to bring, bring somebody in? And I guess I'm, you were very kind earlier and you mentioned some of our strong suits, but maybe I want to hear what we need to work on or?
The, I've, I've just touched upon briefly, you know, some of the, one of the things that may be, maybe make it more difficult to attract highly experienced candidates is the, the more remote location of Salinas where, you know, you're, you're probably a couple hours away from Kansas City, an hour away from Wichita. And so there's, if, if they have a two-career family or if they, you know, it's, it's, those communities that are the most remote sometimes find, have the most difficulty in finding those candidates that want to be closer to a metro area and a big airport if they, if their family members travel a lot, those kinds of things. So I think that's where we really highlight some of the cultural activities that, that Salinas has access to with, with Kansas Wesleyan University and, and the, you know, so college sports. I know you have, it's just some really cool cultural things going on with your sculpture tour and the parks are outstanding and, and baseball tournaments and things like that. And so I think some of those variety of high quality of life attributes really make it attractive for someone locating in Salinas because you all have put a high priority on, on those quality of life issues.
Thank you.
I might follow up on that.
Sure.
Commissioner Longbine here. Are you aware of the air, daily air service we have here in Salinas? You talk like we're in the middle of nowhere, three hours from the airport.
Yeah, the reason I say that, it's not like being at a, at a larger metro airport, you know, there's, there would be just some limited flights in and out on a daily basis. And so that's the only reason I, I said access to a larger metro airport. I, I am aware of, of your airport and its growing significance within the region and the country and of course the economic development that you've got going on with, with jobs. It sounds to me like you've got to add housing potentially to accommodate the great growth in, in, in the economic sector in Salinas. So, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of positives to build on, but we also would need to identify someone that has the strengths to complement what you need as a part of the profile assessment.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We appreciate your time and we're actually at our time limit, but Mr. Davis and Ms. Curtis, we greatly appreciate you zooming in and, and how thorough you've been with your answering of our questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Have a good afternoon. Thanks.
You too. Thank you.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Recording in progress.
Try one more time, the audio is a little bit.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you very much. And could we get an introduction, please?
Yes, so I am Lissa Barker with Strategic Government Resources. My role is Senior Vice President of Executive Recruitment and on this project I would be your project personnel, your point of contact and, and running the search process from our side.
Fantastic. Thank you again for, for zooming in and, and I'm just going to let you know, this is part of an open meeting, so this is being broadcast on YouTube, social media, et cetera. I'm just giving you the heads up on that. But if you have maybe an overview or just an introduction that you have planned, this would be the time to do it.
Yes, and I believe, I have a presentation. I can share that or I cannot, whatever works best.
I'm going to leave that ball in your court, so to speak.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and share the presentation then if that works.
Perfect.
Okay. One second. Just confirming that you all can see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, just. Trying to open it up so I can see you guys again, just one second. All right. So we'll start out. Our mission at SGR is to come alongside local governments and do what we can to support local government in all ways. So recruiting, assessing, developing, developing, innovating, innovative, authentic leaders. So our goal, whether it is executive recruitment or training and development, whatever it might be, to come alongside you guys and fill in a gap anywhere that, that is needed. As such, we're always about continuous improvement and how we best can, to adapt to serve you as, and I'll talk about that as we, as we go through the presentation process. Why use SGR? So cost of a bad hire versus a recruitment. So recruitment costs at $28,900 for a full-service recruitment. And then the vacancy cost as well as what it costs to go through the process of hiring the wrong person and replacing them. So we feel that it's important to, to spend the money upfront, to go through a very thorough and comprehensive process to make sure that you all are getting the right candidate for So time, time comparison, just, these are all averages. So average time period for an in-house hire is about 20 weeks versus outsourcing recruitment is about 12 weeks. A little bit as a full-service partner, I talked a little bit about this at the beginning, but we do consulting activities, executive recruitment. We also provide inter-replacement services, online and in-person onsite training, leadership development, strategic planning and visioning, as well as governance workshops. And then we do, a big part of what we do is digital marketing. So in, in our world today, getting the position out to everybody from a digital perspective through 50,000 subscribers on our newsletter as well as individuals who receive our posts that we send, they're, they're subscribed to. Now I'll talk a little bit about, as we mentioned, the recruitment process, how outside of that we also engage in recruitment activity through social media and networking as well. All right. So importance of digital marketing, about 1,000 average visitors to our website monthly. Your job would be a featured job during the search process. We share with you all a social media schedule so you can see when it's going to be featured, not only on our website, but on other social media platforms as well. We have almost 20,000 followers on LinkedIn. We also have a sourcing partnership through LinkedIn Recruiter. And then on our job board, we had 8,000 job views in the last 30 days, almost 500 Job Alert subscribers. Typical source of our semifinalists, which is always a, a big question, 47% are direct outreach, whether that is personal contact by a recruiter with SGR, email, social media, our website and our, our newsletter as well, the 10 and 10. About 35% from all other sources, including a city website, personal contact, et cetera. And then national trade advertisements makes up about 11% and 6% in state trade advertisements and websites. Here's some recent city manager searches, Corsa County, Texas, Jonestown, Texas, Trinidad, Colorado, Hargal, Texas, and I won't read them all to you, but these are the city manager searches we've done in the recent, recent, the last couple of months. Recent searches near you, Overland Park, Kansas, Director of Parks and Recreation, city administrator searches, two of those in Missouri, as well as Fire Chief in Edmond, Oklahoma, county administrator in Clay County, Missouri, and Assistant City Manager in Columbia. And those are all recent searches. Client feedback, we feel like this is a huge, important thing to us. We want to make sure above all else that you all are satisfied with our service. So 92% of our clients say that they were very comfortable with, are comfortable with SGR and the recruiter, that we provided openly and clear communication throughout the process. 93% were satisfied with the timeline. 92% were comfortable recommending us and 93% were comfortable utilizing us for their future recruitment needs. Candidate feedback, 83% of candidates would definitely apply for another recruitment conducted by SGR. 94% said they were treated, treated with honor and dignity and 84% would apply for another recruitment conducted by SGR. So I am Lissa Barker, as I've mentioned before, Vice Senior Vice President of Executive Recruitment. I come, I've been with SGR for about a little over seven years. I started in the private sector to talent acquisition and, and executive recruitment for a company named Pro Systems, which is a large IT outsourcer. And then moved over, have a connection to local government through my husband's work and, and was able to meet Ron Holyfield and move over to SGR in 2018 where I have been doing executive recruitment for that, since that time. All right. I'm going to talk for a second about our recruitment methodology. And if any point I went too fast, let me know. I cannot see you all anymore. It's just a black screen, but definitely speak up. I will happily stop and then at the end I'll definitely give time for questions as well. So a little bit about recruitment methodology, I'll just talk a little bit about the process. So once the contract is executed, we begin what we call stakeholder engagement and profile development. So during that time period, we are actively, organization to compile all the materials needed to, to complete the recruitment brochure, but we're also engaging what I feel is the most important step of the process, which is stakeholder engagement, where we really are meeting one-on-one with all council members, commission members and decision-makers as well as key stakeholders within the organization, outside the organization. That is a list defined by you all. But we meet one-on-one with those individuals to really try to understand the organization, the culture, and what type of person is going to be the best fit for the position. So that as we begin recruiting, we are targeting those individuals. Also, an important part of that, part of the process is just, you know, creating buy-in in the overall process and the confidence in, in the search process and in the organization as they, as they navigate the search process. So those, those stakeholder engagement pieces can be done virtually or in person, whatever works best from a scheduling perspective for all members on that group of stakeholder lists. We can also create stakeholder surveys at that time to, to get a broader perspective of whether it's an entire employee population or whether it's external in the public. We can also do that at that time period as well. We use the information that we garner from the stakeholder engagement, as well as the information submitted through the organization to create the position profile brochure. We'll work with you guys to finalize that, make any edits you'd like to make. And then, once it is finalized and the position is posted, once the position is posted, we begin actively recruiting for the role. We are going to do tons of extensive outreach, both through social media, but also direct outreach. And, and in, in recent years, definitely have increased that to a new level, using connections on LinkedIn, our own networks, to, to reach out directly to individuals who we feel like might most closely match your candidate, ideal candidate profile. We're talking to those candidates, we're learning more about them, so that when we get ready to present candid information to you, we have a comprehensive picture we give you for your decision-making purposes. We will meet, once the position closes, about a week after it closes, we'll meet with you guys. We do present all applicants for a position. We'll review those candidates with you, their background and experience, and you all will select semifinalists to move forward in the process. Semifinalists are gonna do a couple of things for us. They're gonna do a written questionnaire, which you guys, we'll send you a draft and you will finalize, as well as either online recorded interviews or possibly virtual interviews as well. We'll talk a little bit about the advan- advantages of both of those, and you guys can make a decision. Those, complete all those materials, we'll submit all of that to you for review. You'll review that, and then we'll meet again for finalist selection. Stage one, so all semifinalists are gonna do those steps for us. We're also gonna do a stage one media search on all candidates at that point, that we'll go into legal and their, and their, what's in the news as well. Once you guys select finalists, then we're going to do a stage two media search, background check, a partially blind reference check process before they are onsite for interviews. We also offer a couple other assessment tools if you have interest in those, including dismanagement assessments, first-year gain plans. We can help you create an onsite assessment if you would like to do that as well. We'll work with you at that step, once finalists are selected, to kind of fine-tune exactly what you want that onsite process to look like, what stakeholders you want to be engaged, how best to receive their feedback, et cetera, all the way through deliberations as well. And I'll, I'll just say personally, just for me, my passion in, in executive recruitment, especially as it relates to local government, is really helping you guys find the right puzzle piece for your organization. So it's not just about somebody who can do the job, it's about the person who can do the job, who's the best fit for your, your organization, who has the most opportunity to be successful, which benefits both you and them. And so as we walk through the process, my commitment to you is that I'm a member of your team, and I'm here for you whenever you have a question or a concern, something that, you know, you've thought about and want to discuss as part of the process. Here just to partner with you as we move through the whole process to make sure that we're providing everything you need to make the best decision. All right, a little bit about full-service recruitment costs and not-to-exceed price of $29,419. That includes two multi-dates, usually two to three-day onsite visits by the recruiter, and that also includes our travel costs, up to $2,500 in ad placements. We talked a little bit about those earlier. Those are a pass-through cost, so there's no markup on those. We do offer a 12-month placement guarantee, so no additional professional fees, it would be expenses only. And then we do not include candid travel expenses or supplemental services or ad placements over the 2,500. So those are, that information is on the proposal, what those supplemental services are, but if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer, or Krista, who y'all have been working with on the contract side, can answer those as well. All right, SGR's five keys to a successful search. So I've talked a little bit of all these, as we've talked about, I want to talk a little bit more. First of all, a smooth, seamless process. Like I said, we don't want you to have any questions as, as we, as much as we can. Let me say this, we want to answer all your questions. We don't want to leave you with any question marks as we move through the process. We want everything to be very clear as, as for how the process flows. We, outside of our due diligence, I'm happy to morph the search to meet your needs as, as best we can. So always happy to talk about ideas and things that you would like to do as we move through the process to make it the best for you guys. Our stakeholder engagement provides a comprehensive understanding of the culture, community, and the organization. Like I said, that's imperative to us, helps us to make sure that we are, we are recruiting the correct candidates, the right candidates who could best, be the best fit for your organization. We talked a little bit about state-of-the-art talent marketing that reaches a national candidate pool, candidate vetting. I talked a, a little bit about that, but the stage one, stage two media search, which is gonna go into local blogs, as well as personal social media. And then our partially blind reference check process that we feel like definitely gives a, a, a better view and to reference feedback as well. And then, equally important, those candidates that we provide and help them, and you all engage with them in such a way that provides them a strong understanding of your organization and your community, so that, you know, it's a two-way process. You want to find the right fit, but it's equally important for them to make sure that this is the right organization for them as well. Post-hire services, so as part of our commitment to ensure long-term success, we offer complimentary for our Leadership Development Workshop, within 12 months of successful completion of the executive search. So you'd only be responsible for travel costs for the facilitator. Outside of that, everything is covered. And it's designed to kind of support the newly, the new leader and foster, you know, that kind of, that positive culture within the organization as they get started. All right, that is the end of the presentation, so I'll go ahead and escape out of that.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll open it for questions from the Commission.
Good. Still there?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the screen misled me there for a second. This is Commissioner Trent Davis. I noticed the list that you put up of recent hires was probably not exhaustive.
Correct.
But I noticed there was not much in Kansas, well, I only saw one in Kansas, and that city in Kansas is almost in Missouri. But does your process allow you to adequately assess a community that you might not be familiar with and then match candidates who might not be?
Right.
Because you may get a candidate from 1,000 miles away, and I didn't know how much local, if, if you need local experience to, to identify what a community's culture is.
Yeah, so I think, a couple of things I want to say, I think that, and I don't know if I'm still sharing, so I'm gonna... So I would say that the, it, first of all, you know, SGR does recruitment across, across the country. We try very hard to, to make sure we have an understanding of each organization, their unique culture. And part of that is, yes, you know, we have done some work in Kansas, just from a, from a regional perspective. We've done quite a bit of work there. I'll be honest, I've spent quite a bit of time in the area myself, because I have family in the Wichita area. We have other recruiters who are from the area as well. And so we try to really work with you guys, though, because even in the area, each organization has their unique culture, their perspective on how they do business. And so we want to make sure we understand that clearly, which is why the stakeholder engagement piece is so important. In other words, in that, we really want to understand what it's gonna take for somebody to be able to be successful in your organization as the city manager. So our, our focus will be on that, right? What are those things? Because ultimately, our goal is not only to provide you guys an excellent candidate for them to be set up for success. So I would say that you hit the nail on the head, and that that is one of the most important things. And I think regardless of where we are, we're gonna do the hard work on the front end to make sure that we feel confident, that we understand the organization and what your needs are as it relates to some of those more kind of unique or niche skills that are gonna help somebody be successful in that specific place.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Bill Longbine, what is your first impression of Salina?
Well, you cut out for just a second.
Did I not come through?
No. Would you mind trying that one more time? I'm so sorry.
What is your first impression of Salina as a city?
Yeah, so my first impression of Salina, I'll be perfectly honest, is that you guys, for the size of organization you are, and the part of country, the part of the country that you in, first of all, I'm impressed with the tenure of your outgoing city manager. That's huge. But I think as an organization, just our interaction with you all up to this point has been extremely professional, and everything has been well communicated, handled very well. And so I feel like you all are very well positioned to be an attractive place for somebody to, to take on a role as city manager. I'm gonna be honest, in that city manager roles right now are not as attrac- attractive as they once were. A lot of that is just some, you know, local political issues across the country, this is nothing specific to a specific area, have been more challenging recently. You guys come across, from first impression, as a very professional organization, who would be supportive of an incoming city manager and their success, as you see that as part of your success as well.
Thank you.
At what part during the process do you, do you involve the community, and if so, in what way?
So ultimately, that's up to you, but I can give you my, what we typically advise, or some options on that. I think it's great to have the community involved in the stakeholder engagement part of the process at the beginning, whether that is, I've done a couple of things. We do stakeholder surveys sometimes, which we offer a link to complete, sometimes we offer written options to complete at the local library, but really just open it up to the public. And generally, that's best done online, like I said, but we, we like to have a, a paper option for that as well. Other options is sometimes we do, you know, kind of town hall meetings to kind of get a little more feel for what the community is looking for. So whether we do that during the stakeholder engagement part when we're onsite, we do that virtually, there's many ways. But I feel like it's important to engage them at the beginning, just to get their understanding for what they're looking for, what their, their priorities are in the next city manager. The other place that I think that is really helpful is at the end of the search, when finalists are onsite. If we can offer some kind of, whether it's a meet and greet, or just a forum for candidates to be able to talk to community members. Also, at that time, we would provide them an opportunity to provide feedback. And once again, it would be both forums, online and written. And that feedback would be something we compile for you in its entirety in a report for your review before you make a final decision. So I, both of those times, at the beginning and the end, I feel like are very helpful for you all as you, as you are making decisions for the organization and for the community on what's gonna be the best candidate, to have their feedback and input in those, in both of the, the beginning and the end is really helpful.
Thank you. Any more questions?
One quick question I had is, do you represent individuals that are out looking for a job, or do you just represent municipalities?
We just represent municipalities. And as, in other words, we have a network of people that we definitely, you know, active job seekers, as well as passive job seekers. But just from a representation standpoint, we are not representing the candidates. We are fully representing the organization in the search process and helping you guys to find the best fit for you all. We have great respect for candidates and, and their, you know, their confidentiality throughout the process as much as we can, but also just want to make sure we handle them in a very professional way, in a way that honors their career and their past. But as far as representation, we're representing you and not the candidate.
Thank you.
What is your experience working with communities of our size and complexity?
So I have been doing search work for SGR, like I said, for about seven and a half years, cities all the way from 3,000 to 3, 2 to 3 million, so in everything in between. So from some of the most, most complex counties and cities in the country to some of the smallest cities as well, great breadth of all types of organizations. And I would tell you that, you know, size is not equal complexity always, and complexity doesn't have to equal size, right? So you can have a smaller city that's really complex and a larger one that's not. So really, the, my responsibility is to understand your organization's complexity, the things that make it unique, the things that make it tick, and the things that are gonna be important for the next person to have from a skills perspective, to be able to function at a high level and lead your organization in those areas of complexity.
Any other questions? Well, I think, well, first of all, thank you for your time and zooming in, and greatly appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation and the way you've answered our questions. And I, I believe at this point, we're, we're done with this portion, but thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you. If there's any further questions, we can answer it anytime. Please do not hesitate to reach out.
Will do. Have a good afternoon.
Look forward to the possible opportunity.
Okay.
Take care.
You too.
Bye.
Bye. Do we need to wait until four o'clock or... I'm fine with a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I'm just gonna...
All right.
Right, if they're expecting four, we'll just, yeah, we'll meet back at four.
All right, we'll take a recess until four o'clock.
One, two, 3:50.
Good afternoon. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Just to kind of give you a heads up, we are in a public meeting. And so it's going on Zoom, or I'm sorry, it's going on Facebook, it's going on YouTube, et cetera. But just wanted to make you aware of that before we get started. And for public record, could we get an introduction and the name of your company, please?
Good evening. My name is Anne Lewis, and our firm is Raff Tellis.
Thank you. So I don't know if you have like a, just an overview or a presentation you want to start with, or did you want to just dive into the questions from the commission?
I'd be pleased to give you a brief overview of our approach and our firm.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Anne Lewis. I am a recruiter for Raff Tellis. I have served local government for close to 20 years before joining the arena of recruiting for local government. So I understand what it takes to work in local government, and I understand what the language is about and what these positions are about. It's pretty exciting to think about working with your city following a manager who has done so much and a team that has supported the work of the manager over those years. With Raff Tellis, we have a simple approach. It's a three activities that help you as the governing body make what I believe is one of the most important decisions of your tenure as elected officials. And that's for the future of your city and for making sure that this is the right person at the right time who will, who will join and lead your organization. Our three activities include developing a profile, and this is a very collaborative process because we want to understand where you're at now, where you want to go in the future, what that style is, what that fit is that you're looking for, as well as certainly the professional expertise. As part of this process, we will also develop a first-year goals document. And this helps not only during the recruitment process, but then after this process, for you to gauge the success of your city manager. And they have a roadmap of where you want them to go. So as we work on developing that profile, we'll develop a set of first-year goals and have both of those documents approved by you before we begin our outreach process. The recruitment brochure is what I call the springboard for everything else that we do. It is how we outreach to candidates based upon the skill sets that you're looking for. It is how we help develop how the vetting process for candidates, the interview process at the end, the questions that we ask during, that we propose for the interview, interview process. So it's an important time that we spend with you, learning more about the organization and about your expectations. The outreach is, again, a very important component that I don't want to spend less than 30 days on so that we can make sure that we have all of the correct people engaged and calling folks for, that may be currently working but not looking. And so that direct outreach, when we tell them what this opportunity is about, they may say, I'd like to learn more and end up applying for the position. And we find that to be very successful. And then we'll screen those candidates and present approximately 10 candidates for your review to determine who you'd like to move forward as, as part of the interview process. This three-step process is about 30 to, excuse me, 90 to 120 days. Each step is, takes a period of time that we want to make sure that you get the right fit for your organization. So we collaborate with you, we'll source candidates, we make sure that they have the expertise that you need to lead the city. And then it's a very customized plan based upon your needs and your organization's needs going forward. I take the process and the burden of conducting a recruitment off of staff so that they can focus on the day-to-day operations. And I collaborate closely with you, continue to provide details to you throughout the process, regular communication so everyone understands where we're at, what the deliverable is going to be, and how we can ensure that the timeliness of this recruitment to keep candidates engaged. I'm very proud of how we do that outreach to make sure that we have a diverse candidate pool for you to consider and that the confidentiality of the process remains until such time where it may be more advantageous for a community to make an introduction of candidates should they choose to do so. So we support you based upon what you would like to do for this process and our expertise in conducting hundreds of searches across the United States in, in local government at these level of positions. And we would be pleased to work with the city on the recruitment of your next city manager. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Outstanding. And thank you for that. And I'll open it to the commission for any questions.
Good afternoon. This is Commissioner Trent Davis. I see you're from my part of the neck of the, of the country, from DC. You're just right across the river. Do you find much difference in what you need to attract candidates to an area that's, not even though you were more in rural Virginia, to this part of the country as opposed to where you had a lot of your experience on the East Coast?
So, you know, it's an interesting question because I've worked with clients across the United States and, and, you know, part of what is important is that fit that I spoke to, not only professionally but personally. I'll give you an example. I was working with a, a community in Alaska, a very remote area. And it was one where we had to really do outreach to make sure that that can, that the candidates understood the rural nature of that community and the benefits of working in that community. And so, again, it is making sure that we are presenting the city well in the recruitment brochure. And then when I conduct phone interviews to understand their motivation and interest in the position, that it aligns with what I believe the city is looking for and how, how they presented themselves. It's an important way, important feature for us to communicate to candidates. But it's not unusual for many areas of the country. I had another community in Virginia where there was no stoplight and there was no, a, a, a large box store. And council said, please, when you talk with candidates, tell them they've got to drive an hour to go to a big box store. And we found a candidate that, that was absolutely in line with his quality of life.
And just one other related question. How do you either objectively or subjectively gauge candidates' management and leadership styles to make sure that indeed they are a fit for our organization's style?
So again, understanding initially what you're looking for in style. I conduct telephone interviews with candidates, talk at great length with them about their interest in the position. It's actually a video interview with them. We gauge, we design interview questions around style and, and as part of the reference checking process, we will match that, what we've heard and, and seen during the interview process against what the references might say. Some of those references may be what have been provided to us and other references may be folks that we know in the industry to, again, ascertain that fit and understanding of it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Bill Longbun, do you verify past performance and references?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. And can you tell me what's your first impression of Salina is?
Recording stopped.
Sorry, I heard something in my ear about a recording. I just wanted to make sure everything was okay.
Can you tell me what's your first impression of the city of Salina is?
Yes, yes, sir. So what I have learned about Salina and the real community spirit that I see there, the, what I, what it sounds like, a bit of a renaissance over the years and the, in the revitalization of, of your downtown. And I live in a, in a city about half the size of your city, and I know what downtown means to our city and the, really the heartbeat of it. And when I see the long tenure of your city manager, that speaks to the quality of life and the culture of an organization. When, when someone is successful in that type of revitalization, when you've got economic development that is spurred by it, when you have community festivals, it brings people together. And I think that is attractive, not only for someone professionally, but personally, who may be relocating not just themselves, but a family too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Jerry Ivey, under your proposal, you have firm capabilities, and it looks like there's a lot of recruiting that you do, kind of around. So what would you say your percentage, just rough percentages of city manager type recruiting versus everything else your company does?
You know, it's a, it's a strong blend of positions. I would say most of our positions are, let's percentage, probably 65% are city manager positions. We do a lot of work in utilities as well, but other department directors are right up there with our utilities work. So more than half are city managers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hoppick here. How do you anticipate having public input into this process?
So that'll be a question that I would actually ask you because it is different for other clients that we work with. Some clients that I work with say, Anne, we're the elected body. We have regular communications with our constituents and we understand and they have an opportunity to talk with us about what they're looking for in the next city manager. Some clients choose to have a citizen survey about what the characteristics they're looking for in the city manager. I have some clients that involve the public at the interview process as a separate panel and then receive qualitative feedback. And so they would invite specific members of the community, for example, a chamber of commerce director, a hospital director, a secondary education representative. And those community members that are specifically invited as members of the public would serve as a separate interview panel and then again, provide qualitative feedback to the city council or city commission after the interview process. And then that governing body takes that qualitative feedback into consideration. So there are a number of options that we can help facilitate as, to involve the public should you wish to do so.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, Dave, just maybe a follow-up to that, well, not a follow-up to that, but how wide is your candidate search? Do you have ways you like to look for candidates?
So my approach is, you know, certainly we, we focus on the region, but I cast a really wide net. And I'll tell you why. You know, post-COVID, I found that there were individuals wanting to make professional relocation decisions for different reasons. And I had a, someone who had contacted me about a finance director position, and they were in California, and the position was in Virginia. And I asked why? And they said, because my daughter is going to school at the University of Virginia, and I want to be closer to her because she's gonna, her career is gonna take her to the, to the East Coast. And so I, I cast a wide net when I conduct outreach. I work a great deal on LinkedIn to learn more about who is, might be looking for a position. I am active in the International City County Management Association and other state associations. I contact to, again, determine who, who might be interested in a position and would they be a good fit. So my approach is to be regional in an initial nature, but, but to cast a wide net to show what the city has to offer and who might be a good fit for the city professionally and as a, as a leader.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you seek out candidates who are not actively looking for new position?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, I do. I have, it's not uncommon for me. It's a regular occurrence for me when I conduct a recruitment to call on candidates and say, here's a position that I'm working with a community on. Would you be interested in, in learning more about it? It's, you know, when, when folks are actively working and, and their head is to the, to the desk to, to look at the, what's facing their community, they're, they're not, and they may be a, the, one of the top candidates for a position, but it's very common for me to do that. And if they say no, then I also ask, who do you know might be a good fit? And those connections are vital to providing a robust candidate pool for your consideration.
And what trends do you see in the hiring process today? And how would you ensure communication with the governing body?
So that there, there are trends that include the following. The retirement of our local government leaders is real. They are, they're moving on. And so that means that the candidate pool may not be all city managers, current city managers, or town administrators, or county administrators, but there might be deputies, and there might be finance directors, and there might be utility directors, people who are ready for their, the next step in their career. And so I would ask if you would be open to having someone serve in your city manager capacity that may not have been in that position before. So the retirement of current city managers and, and a, I'd say a broader pool in the terms of titles is not uncommon. It is also not uncommon to have more men in a recruitment pool than females in a recruitment pool. And I do a lot of outreach to underrepresented people in the profession. I serve, actively serve in the Virginia Women Leading Government chapter, but I also outreach to the other women in government or women leading government chapters. I'll outreach to the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. I would outreach to the Emerging Local Government Leaders Association to provide a multi-pronged approach to. approach to attracting candidates. The other thing that I see is a, a candidate pool that really does their homework. And I don't want to say that, that's, that's, that's different, but you know, I get wonderful questions. I find that, that candidates are very intentional about where they're applying because it's a big move for them and, and they're more likely to move across state lines than they were 15 or 20 years ago. When I was in local government in Virginia and we had a manager position open, then it was generally another manager in Virginia who filled that position. But it's, it's going to be more common now to have candidates from all across the United States as part of that candidate pool. Those are a few of the trends that I see in local government recruiting. And then to speak to communications, you know, once we develop that recruitment brochure, I'll provide you with a plan and we'll have discussed what dates you would like to see the progress of this recruitment moving forward. And then I will update you on the candidate pool as we go throughout the recruitment process. But that plan, that recruitment plan will outline for all of us, what are our next steps and when to expect those deliverables so that we can keep on track, to keep the recruitment moving forward and that I can communicate that to candidates. Because it's also not uncommon for me to see candidates in multiple recruitment pools if they want to move up in their career. But it's important for me to keep them engaged so that we don't lose a candidate because we have slowed down for a reason that is outside, that is, you know, in something that we could have controlled. So we certainly are flexible, we understand that things happen and we may need to adjust a timeline and we're nimble enough to be able to do that as well. And we'll communicate that regularly, either with the full body or a person that you will have appointed to have that communication to me that will pass it on to you as the governing body.
Commissioner Hoppick here, as, as we enter into the search, do you help us put together a benefit pay package for the candidates? And do you advertise that when we go out recruiting?
Yes, so we'll talk about what is in that benefit package. I can help you and/or work with your human resources staff to determine who your comparators are and establish a salary range. I strongly encourage you to advertise a range. If we do not advertise a range, they will call me and ask. You know, everyone wants to make sure that it's a competitive salary for the work that they're going to be doing. So I strongly encourage a salary range to be advertised. I will help make sure that we have a very detailed description of your benefits package that you'll be offering. And should you need assistance, I'll certainly help with the negotiation of that salary and contract, which would obviously be reviewed by your legal counsel as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Just, just one, it's, how much extra support staff do you have in your office? I would assume you're not the only one doing all of this work.
You're correct, sir. So we, I, I will have a, another recruiter assist me on the process and then we have a recruitment specialist who helps coordinate some of the advertising and outreach that we do. She is also, she's featured in, in the proposal. Kelsey is also an excellent writer, so she will assist in writing that recruitment brochure and with some of the communications with candidates. We have two administrative support staff that also assist with ensuring that the items are posted in a timely manner and, and that we're acknowledging the receipt of the applications to each of, from each of our candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no more questions? I, okay, well, we greatly appreciate your time and the thoroughness in which you've answered the questions in your presentation and we, I guess we'll conclude this, this Zoom session. Thank you.
Thank you, I, thank you. I appreciate being here this evening and it would be an honor to work with you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a great day.
Take care. You too.
So with that, I'll, I'll ask legal counsel. So at this point, any further discussion needs to be in executive session?
No, not necessarily. And I understand why you might have gotten that impression from the agenda. The agenda was prepared to give you the greatest level of flexibility possible today, depending on how far you might wish to go today. The subpoint, 3.2 on your agenda would be the opportunity to discuss relative merits and if you can zero in on the preferred source of the services, that would be the opportunity, presumably now, for that type of discussion. The reason for the executive session language, as you probably noted, it's broken down into two subpoints. Not knowing, one, whether it would be necessary to utilize an executive session to identify points of potential negotiation as far as any contract that you might wish to consider entering into with your preferred firm. The reason I broke it down into two, if, sometimes you have to have an executive session to determine whether or not there are points of negotiation that require further formulation. And then if there are, then point two is what was the basis for being able to continue to have that attorney-client privileged discussion so that you could reach consensus on those points of negotiation. If the answer to one is, well, no, we don't have any, we see the proposal and we simply want to have whomever you direct, Ms. Fisher, or one of you for that matter, to have further conversation with the firm of your choice, then that can occur without the executive session, if you, or without phase two of the executive session. If you all determine that, no, there are no major points of negotiation, we're ready to talk about entering into an agreement. Phase two was to give you the opportunity to further hash out what those points of negotiation might be, should you wish to pursue any of those. And again, we're in a special meeting context, so it, there is a heightened level of importance of laying out all the potential points of the agenda. So that's why I laid that out in that degree of detail, so you could go as far as you might wish today or, or not.
Understood, thank you. I just want to be sure.
You know, it was.
Didn't violate the procedural.
It was where I was headed to explain why, it may appear overly complex, but it was to leave all the options open to go as far as you might wish today.
All right. It appears complex here, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we should have a right as a commission to go into our executive session to deliberate which firm we want to choose.
Actually, the clarification I need to make, the deliberation on which one you wish to look to as your preferred choice must occur in this public setting. Any discussion of the relative merits of the firms needs to occur in public. It's only when you've identified who you might choose to potentially enter into an agreement that we get into the territory where you're beginning then to say, well, here are the points of negotiation that we want to be sure we present in terms of, the terms of that engagement. That, unless, unless and until you get to that point, there is no attorney-client privilege in order to be the basis for an executive session discussion. So the identification of your preferred candidate firm does need to occur in this public setting.
I stand corrected.
Well, and again, I mentioned it briefly and I hope this is helpful for you all and anybody that might be listening. There is a point in this process where you will be able to evaluate candidates in executive session. The base, that is one of the, I mean, it's, both candidates and existing personnel are viewed as those who have privacy interests. That is the purpose of the ability to have the executive session. It frankly doesn't relate to you all and what you all might wish to say or think about and talk about. It has to do, the, the point in time where we get to a personnel-based executive session is when you are talking about matters relatively, relative merits of a particular candidate or qualifications, anything to do with a person that is under consideration. Their privacy interests are what enable you to have that personnel-based executive session. Right now, we're strictly in the area of, do you get to a point where it's an attorney-client privilege-based executive session? And that's only in the context of points of negotiation for purposes of entering into a contract.
Understood. So with that in mind, I'll just, well, actually, Ms. Fisher, is there anything you want to add before we start deliberating on? Okay. Well, everyone wants to get started.
Do we need to have the clerk read out item 3.2?
I certainly can.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Good point.
Item 3.2 is deliberation and potential preliminary identification of preferred executive search firm to be engaged.
All right. Bring it back to the commission.
Well, I would say we did a very good job in narrowing the nine down to four. And I don't think we're going to have a bad choice here. And with all this scribbling, you know, the relative merits of the firms changed and there was, there was movement along the home stretch, so to speak, in, in horse racing terms. You know, my final impression was that, you know, their processes are similar enough that I don't think I can separate them on that, that basis. I thought that Ms. Lewis from Raffatelli seems to be very objective and she probably has the least physical connection with Kansas. But then I thought about it and said, well, gosh, you know, maybe she won't be Kansas nice, so to speak. And, and you know, sometimes familiarity gets in the way of objective assessment of skill set and style. She has recruited for a wide variety of positions and I like the fact that she makes us declare what we want in the candidate before we start advertising for the candidate. I mean, the, the differences between these four are, are thin, but I would put Raffatelli first, SGR second, Baker Tilly third, and GPS fourth. Now, we're going to do an experiment, just going to see if the left-handed side of this table works differently from the right-handed side. I just noticed the reason we get along so well on this side of the desk, we all have our papers adjusted for a left, left-handed, right. So we don't overlap each other here.
Okay, I'll go next, I guess, since I'll represent the start of the right side. And I agree with Commissioner Davis, I think they all will basically do the same, the same thing. They'll build a, you know, build what the community's looking for, do their search, do interviews, bring us a certain amount. I, as I got, I did mine, as I went through and listened to them, I gave each one of them a number. And just, because some of it to me is gut feeling, because I, I think they all do the same things. I, on the first one, I was taken back by the fact that Junction City hired somebody that didn't come through kind of the municipality deal. And I was, I was a little taken back. But again, that would have been up to the, the commission more than them. It was obviously someone they thought, the GPS thought could fill that job. Then after listening to Ms. Lewis, and she talked a little bit about the same thing, although it's people within the municipalities, it might be somebody that was in head of utilities or development services. So the one thing I did get out of this with all four of them is the city manager pool's a lot smaller than it used to be, I believe. And I've always said, when Mr. Scragg left, I said, I don't know why you do this job. You know, I mean, you've got 50,000 bosses and none of them think you do a good job part of the time. So I think there's just a lot that goes into that. I narrowed mine down. You want to hear my order? GPS first, which you had fourth. Right away, I knew we had a problem. I had Raffatelli, is it Raffatelli? Is that how she pronounced it?
Raffatelli.
Raffatelli. Second, and the other two, I, I, I think I've got mine down to two. I think the, I think Baker Tilly, just there was something about it. We've used Art Davis before, when he was with Springstead Waters, I was disappointed in the candidates we had. I just, that just didn't set well with me and SGR I thought was just too corporate. I didn't, I didn't feel like they were personal enough and really Salina was their number one, you know, we weren't their main objective. I, you know, we, they went over fees and stuff, just said, it just felt corporate to me.
We, we were disappointed with maybe all but one of their candidates.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, but I mean, the pool was, yeah, I just, yeah, exactly. Sorry, Mr. Scragg, anyway. Or two. I mean, they, it just wasn't as, the pool just wasn't as broad as I thought it should be. I do believe as a community, we're in a better position now financially, the economic development we've gone through and a lot of those things. So I think we should be more attractive. The only thing, and, and again, with, with Ms. Lewis being in Virginia, I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing. I think people will cross state lines. I'm not sure they'll cross East Coast to Midwest, maybe to, to come to Salina, because I think one of them did mention part of our draw, I don't want to say drawback, but challenges is that we are in the Midwest, we're not a real, real large community. I think it's kind of why we're doing digital marketing now through the chambers. We've got, if you get people here, I think we can keep them. I'm not sure how many people from the East Coast or other areas of the country would apply for this job. I did like the familiarity that GPS had, that Chris Low and his partner had with, with Salina. I think that brings some merit. He, he spoke about specific things. So I don't know, that's, he did talk about, you know, how, and again, I think so did Ms. Lewis, talked about how they would, you know, help negotiate, you know, the package and salary. And I'm guessing they all four probably do, but those two brought that up.
Right, just devil's advocate, is it better to have somebody who's so entrenched in Kansas that they're going to not see that diamond in the rough, let's just say, from West Virginia or Nevada?
And I think, and I, and I thought about that, you know, but he's in Colorado now and his partner's in Texas. If you look at where they've done a lot of work, they've done a lot in Texas. So it's not, it's not like everything they do is in Kansas. That's what concerned us when we looked at the Kansas municipalities. They had a very small, it looked like, section. The fact that he says, I even have people in mind that I would say, here's a job that might be advantageous for you. So again, I'm not, I'm like you, I don't know if we can go wrong, but those were the top two GPs. top two, GPS and, and Raffatellis were, were my two favorites.
And after the, their presentation, they were a number one spot. Of course, they went first, but it's, it's.
It's always easy to be number one when you go first, huh? So.
I mean, without question, all, all four firms were very professional and very well-versed in, in their arena of expertise. What resonated with me with GPS was former city managers specifically that are hiring for city manager positions. And, you know, circling back to, you know, sometimes it's just gut feeling, but GPS, it doesn't feel like we're just another client. It feels like these, these folks have a vested interest in, hey, if, if they bring us a, a lackluster candidate, it feels like there's more accountability, in my opinion, like there's going to be conversations that happen in the community or the region where it's like, well, this happened here, and that didn't go well, and that doesn't bode well for their, for their business model. You know, Baker Tilly, SGR, very professional. Again, they, they seem very well-versed in, in their field. But there was kind of, and you said corporate, and I, I think it just felt like, and I both, I wrote kind of, feels like we're just another client. Like, there's really nothing special about Salina in terms of, from their perspective, and it's just, you know, feels like we're just another box to check, and I.
Well, and I think Commissioner Longbine asked the question about Salina, and I had a note down here, SGR, they really didn't have much background on Salina. It was like, you're in Kansas.
That.
Kind of, you know, and at least the others had done some homework and understood we'd redone the downtown and some things, I just felt, so.
I agree.
The, the one thing, and I forgot to say this, I really, I like the, the one comment that Ms. Lewis made on the last presentation was their first-year goal document. They have goals for that first year. I really thought that was, was, was important. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't put that in with whoever we go with, but that, I, I kind of liked that. The fact that they had that in their presentation.
And I, I was impressed with Raffatellis's, or Mrs. Lewis's, uh, presentation, and it seemed like she was doing like more out-of-the-box thinking in terms of, you know, if you're finding somebody, hey, there's not a box store within an hour drive. I mean, that's, that's kind of a tough, tough shoe to, to fit. And, you know, for them to, to, you know, to be transparent with their client, with their clients and with the applicants, and this is, you know, this needs to be a good fit, and here's why. It just struck me that the communication was, was going to be where it needed to be, and, you know, transparency with, with everybody involved. And, you know, I, just to reiterate, I, I kind of had it narrowed down to Raffatellis and GPS at this point. Just seemed like a better fit, but I'm definitely open to any other.
Well, I thought Raffatellis and Ms. Lewis was very professional, very prepared, and very clear and easy to understand. With SGR, that moved too fast, I, I couldn't keep up. Raffatellis is the top tier in terms of cost, and I think that they are, would do a good job very broad, but do lack a little understanding of exactly where we're at and who we are. But I, I came back to GPS, you know, I had mentioned earlier, I followed up on references and spoke to, to people that did hires with them, and they were very, very happy with the communication and the performance. And their connection, knowing where we are, who we are, is very impressive, and I, I think they would be my top choice.
I, I'm glad we did these interviews, because going off the proposals, I think my list flipped from there to, to now. Matter of fact, Raffatellis wasn't even one I wanted to interview, but now there, I'd put them at the top. I thought she was very well-spoken, lots of experience, if you look at it. I mean, she, she came from Baker Tilly recently and is now at Raffatellis. One of the points she made was, to me, which may be one of the best points out of all of anyone made, is I like her idea of having the separate interview panel with the select public figures, because, you know, that, that gives, I mean, obviously, we're going to have public input as well, but to have the select figures that, I don't know, they would have to give us more guidance as to who that is, but that would kind of help us with the process as well. So that, that was one of the biggest things I took out of it. Number two was GPS. Chris Low, I thought, just having the two guys kind of give us a little bit more attention. They're closer, they're more available, but either one of those. The other two, I, you know, call it tie for third.
The, to follow up on your comment about the allowing individuals to do the, separate group doing the interviews, I actually had made a note on that, that I remember when GPS was talking, he made the comment that made me feel, Chris made me feel like they were open to how much we wanted public involvement. And so he kind of said, it's kind of up to you. So I kind of felt like if, if we wanted to have a separate stakeholder group, they do that. The other thing that, that Chris from GPS talked about was that if we wanted to, they would also meet with department heads. I don't know if that's good or bad, but that's something we'd think about. He, he threw that out there, so I, I have mixed, I have mixed feelings on that, but that's.
And I think that's where we can direct.
Yes.
Whoever we.
And I felt like they were not, and again, weren't in a box. They were a little more open to you kind of tell us what you want to do a little more. So, but I, I agree with you guys, I think we can't go wrong with the, hopefully, either one.
One thing I did like about Ms. Lewis is that you ask her a question, you have your answer in 20 seconds, and you move on.
Yeah.
None of this five-minute stretching out.
Yeah.
You know, coming up with an answer that looks like it sounds good, judging by our reaction.
I, I thought same thing.
She was sharp, but I suspect she was getting some help in the background.
Well, just that moving feel, but takes a while to get used to seeing that.
So, I don't.
That and a chat, had a chat bubble pop up.
Yeah, yeah, 10-4 on that.
But very good. One thing I liked about GPS, their idea of them doing interviews with candidates and then recording that and making it accessible to us to narrow that field down.
I think they all, I think all of them said they would present, now, the number varied, I think, from, what, 10 to 15? Can, there's going, at some point, we would have to watch 10 to 15.
Yeah.
Because we're going to have to help them narrow that number down.
I like that idea of us hearing what they hear and see.
Until you've watched interview number eight, and then you realize.
Yeah.
It's, oh, wow, this is.
I didn't think they'd bring us 15. Did I misinterpret that when I asked that question? But I thought he said they, they'd interview like 15, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't get 15 submitted to us.
He'd weed out.
He'd weed out.
That was Baker Tilly's, that includes up to 15 semifinalists, but we would have to do the whittling. And I think they probably are all at the point where at some point they say, hey, these are your 10 best, you know, where do you want to narrow this list down?
You, you know, the other thing that was interesting, and I think if not all four of them said it, maybe three of the four, is they were impressed with the length of stay of our city manager.
Mm-hmm.
It wasn't like a, you know, it's not like a 20-year stay. It, what, Mike, you're seven? Eight as city manager? Seven? So, I mean, so it tells me that the.
And he had the shortest tenure of the last three.
The longevity of a city manager's not as long as I would have thought.
And I think he would have stayed longer had he not had family situations going on and a pension.
Yeah.
That was impressive. GPS worked with Jason Gage, though, and know that history, so.
Well, if you add up the box scores, Raffatellis would have one, one point lower than GPS, but it's, I, I really don't think, you know, we're going to make a bad choice here.
Yeah, and I think Commissioner Hoppeck's comment about them stating how the, the pool is shrinking of people that want to get into municipal service, government, you know, we're seeing that in utilities and public works and everything else, so I suppose city manager's no different.
Well, that was the other thing that Raffatellis did mention. They have hired plenty of department heads, and we've got, what, six department heads up for retirement in the next two years, five or six, some potential. I won't put any of them on the spot, but we, we may need some help in that area soon.
Yeah, and I, I believe the GPS worked with Grand Island, Nebraska, for a city manager and a public, public works director. They know, they know what we got here.
Well, my ego won't be damaged, I'll make a motion and consider you all friendly folks, I'll still be your friend when we walk out of here. I would move that we contract with Raffatellis to provide our city manager search. I feel like I'm leaving out a word. Processed.
I'd second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second to procure the services of Raffatellis for the search for city manager. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Aye. So we got two, three.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next. Mayor Linkwitz, I move that we hire GPS or enter into a contract, would that be a better way to put it? Government Professional Solutions to conduct our candidate recruitment for a city manager.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second to enter into a contract with government professional services in regard to the search for city manager position. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That one's 5-0.
And I would have not been upset with the other one either. I mean, I think they, yeah.
Yeah, I think that was a win-win. And we have a decision made that one, that's, uh.
Mayor, if I, if I may, as you all may have noted, as I read the GPS written information, first of all, I believe theirs was a flat fee quote. Correct me if I'm wrong, that he was 21.5.
I got 21.5 in my notes.
Yes, that's what I read as well.
And I can't remember, was there additional costs for anything? Do you remember, or was it, I?
Their statement indicates that that includes all of their, uh, I'll try to flip back to it here quickly, I was looking at the.
Because I can't, they all kind of ran together, I know some of them had like costs, and then there were some additional costs that depended on additional services.
I thought that that indicated that included expenses, and now I, I've lost that page, I had it, but.
Try to look at page, overall cost and value of project. Doesn't have a page number. Says GPS offers a firm fixed fee of 21.5 to conduct the professional executive search, yeah.
That's the statement I was.
Yeah. We will, and then they have, they will bill it in three separate, it talks about.
Right.
Does that include the marketing and transportation?
The statement is there at page 20 of their proposal and says in bold, which includes all our expenses and costs.
Are there any expenses that they consider our expenses?
Well, it's, that's the good point for clarification, certainly. The, the other thing that you all may have noticed as well, they state on page 18, GPS is happy to execute a standard contract form provided by the city, or if preferred, we can provide our standard engagement agreement. GPS further acknowledges that our firm maintains or will acquire the minimum or greater of the insurance limits required. We do have a base form that we use, as you all have seen, for consulting services, or we could certainly see what their proposal is.
Yeah, I would, I would think as legal counsel, we'd allow you to look at theirs, and if it, if it's suffice is fine, if not, I'm sure, well, to me, that's, that's.
That makes sense.
If you guys are all right with that, I think, well, you know, just let Mr. Binkston.
Seems reasonable to me. And the question, of course, that I'm going to is, is whether, again, back to the executive session opportunity, if you wish, if there are any points that you feel like need to be presented from a negotiation standpoint, that's where we'd want to hash that out. If there are none, and we're at the point of where you simply think, let's see what their agreement says, and we know that it's a fixed fee proposal, then we can certainly just advance the discussion in that manner.
That's.
And, and I'm not presuming, I presume that Ms. Fisher would still be in the lead role on that, it's just a matter of what our expectation is as far as the document.
On page 20, it, it states the fixed fee of 21.5, which includes all our expenses and costs.
Right, right.
Yeah, I think before, if I remember right, we went into executive session, and helped me remember, but because they had different pockets that you could, could do, and so you may, we maybe only did steps one and two and not step three or something. Wasn't there some reason that we, we looked at their, when we did it the last time? I can't remember.
Well, I think had, if that were the case.
Right, but I don't think here we have any problem.
No, I think with that flat fee.
And I think that's why we don't, for a flat fee, it's pretty.
Flat fee for the full scope, I think it's.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go into executive session.
I would concur with that. And, yeah, again, it's kind of cathartic to get that, that part of the process done with, so a step closer to the light, more work to do. So with that, we have been.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.
Thank you.